Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed Department Directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County: It's Life Well Run.
Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the Kent County Board of Commission meeting. Today's date is Thursday, June 9th, 2016. The time is 8:30 a.m. And we will begin today's meeting with roll call.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Present.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Olter.
Here.
Stack.
Here.
Hunstein.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Reeve.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Vander Mullen.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Talon.
Here.
Flotowski.
Present.
Shivas.
Here.
Hornike.
Present.
Schroll.
Here.
Chair.
Here. We then move to Agenda Item 3, which is invocation. And I call on Commissioner Callen.
Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce Reverend Kathy Smith, good friend and my former pastor at First Christian Reform Church in Grand Rapids. Kathy currently serves as an adjunct professor at Calvin Seminary and as Associate Director for the Calvin Institute for Christian Worship. Welcome Reverend Smith.
Thank you, June, for the invitation to be here. And thank you to the commission for allowing me to lead you in the invocation. Shall we pray? Most gracious God, we come to you this morning to express our gratitude and to seek your blessing. We are grateful for this new day, for our colleagues gathered here, for all those who support our county and its commission. We give you thanks for the people of Kent County, for the resources it provides, and for the beauty we enjoy in it. We ask that you will bless this commission today, give to the commissioners clear insight and wisdom. May discussions be models of thoughtful process and civil discourse. May their work be characterized by skill and good judgment, and may their personal faiths give the strength to act honestly and respectfully. May we all seek to do what is best for our county, its citizens, and its resources. Bless all the people in this county as we enter the summer months, grant safety and peace to its citizens in their work and their play, and wisdom to those whose responsibility it is to help keep us safe. We lift up this prayer to you, O God, and humbly seek your peace and your justice for all your children. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that invitation. And we move then to Agenda Item Number 5, which is a special order of business. Today, we're honored to hear from Kate Meyer about the Kent County Parks Foundation. So, good morning, Kate.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here today as well. And I'll see if my technological skills are going to come in handy today. I'm a little bit of a nature nerd and a Parks person, so they put me in front of a computer. It's a little bit out of my element here. So, many of you are familiar with the Parks Foundation. I've met many of you as well, so we appreciate all of your support. But in case you need a refresher, our mission really is to connect people to our parks, and we inspire them to move by investing in our open spaces, parks, and trails. And our primary role is to support our Kent County Parks Department. That is what we do. We engage the community in helping them achieve the goals outlined in their master plan, and we do that through philanthropy. Now, I have the best job in the world. I get to take people out to our parks, go for hikes, and inspire them to make sure that these places are there forever, for perpetuity, and to grow and to expand. So, KCPF, the Kent County Parks Foundation, is really special to me. A little bit of background, I grew up in the suburbs of Lansing. And like many of you, and I think I'm the last generation of kids that grew up just running free. My mom would lock me out of the house, literally, and say, "Go find something to do." And I would, of course, just find all kinds of flowers to pick and forts to build in the woods. And being that I grew up in the most, the actual suburb that I grew up in was the fastest-growing community in the United States, second only to Zephyr Hills, Florida, thanks to my grandma, who moved there along with all of her friends at the time. So, as I grew up, I actually watched all of those places that I explored turn into subdivisions and strip malls, literally right before my eyes. So, it changed in me a land ethic and really, you know, brought me into this light of, what can I do to make sure that these spaces are here, not just for me, but for my kids and grandkids? So, we're so fortunate here in West Michigan and in Kent County to have places like Millennium Park. Of course, this is our crown jewel, and the foresight that went into planning this park is just immeasurable. What many people don't realize is that Millennium Park is twice the size of Central Park in New York City. So, if you imagine this iconic green space, this urban oasis for the people of New York, we have a space twice that size. I can't stress enough the foresight that went into planning for Millennium Park and our other parks many years ago, back when the Parks Department began in 1924. It's that same foresight and vision that people knew this would be a valuable resource. So, I do like to brag that we have a park twice the size of Central Park. And similarly, this is what New York looked like 160 years ago, where Central Park is located. And similarly to Millennium Park, this is prime real estate. This could have been developed. There's plenty of demand for housing and for businesses. But people understood the value in having these spaces preserved. And I can't imagine New York without Central Park, and today, we can't imagine Kent County without Millennium. There's still lots of work to do, though. This is one of the wetlands at Millennium, and the foundation plays a pivotal role in helping expand our parks, helping with capital improvements, and a lot of land acquisition as well. So, this summer, we're proud to be being a part of the acquisition of another 27 acres to add to that footprint of that park. So, it's not always about recreation. Sometimes, it's just knowing that we're preserving a space that is so pivotal, an integral habitat for wildlife, especially our river corridors that there's so much focus on right now to preserve, to helping with flood mitigation, and making sure that there's public access to green spaces and our waterways. We know that parks have a huge role to play in tourism. And again, here's some of Millennium. We've got our splash pad, our beach, all of these different activities, but it's not just there. We have 37 other parks and four regional trails. So, the Parks Foundation is really proud to not just be focusing on Millennium, but looking ahead, working with the Parks Department and outlining in their master plan, what is the next park? Where is there the most population growth? And where are there opportunities for us to be a part of the acquisition and a part of the development, knowing that we're just going to continue to get more people coming to West Michigan and to Kent County because it's a pretty awesome place to live? It's kind of the reason that I'm here as well. There's more than just going to the beach. We have lots of tourism, races, runs. There are so many activities to do at all of our parks, and our regional trails are really a big thing as well. We've got a biker here, and we've seen an increase in that. When we look at the survey work that the Parks Department and the Johnson Center at GVSU have put together, the number-one priority for all of the respondents was to preserve natural spaces, no matter where they lived in the county. And number two, and a close second, was connecting our parks and communities through regional trails. We're seeing a huge increase in non-automotive transport, and people want to be able to move around by bike, by rollerblades, by longboard, whatever they want to do. And so, we're seeing our regional trails being a huge part of that place. The other thing that we work on is really making sure that we have access to the green space. In our fastest-growing communities, much of our private land is the natural spaces. And so, we work on making sure that there is free public access, and it's not just private landowners or people that can drive 40 miles that are available to go to places. And if we don't do that for our kids, this is the alternative. This little dude drives me crazy. He's so cute. But there are days when I feel exactly like this guy. Kids are spending an average of seven hours in front of a screen every day. I don't even think I can do that, and at the end of it, I'm just completely drained if I have a day where I'm on the computer. But to have kids on screens all day long is causing a lot of issues with them. We've got social behavioral issues. We've got health issues. You know, they don't know how to interact with each other. And you see families going to places for vacations and all sitting on a bench on their phones, all just lined up like little clones. That, to me, is not being with family and exploring. That is just moving your body to a different place and disengaging. So, we have a generation of kids that are disengaged from the real world, not just the outside world, but just the world in which they live. And we have these spaces that are there for them if they want to use them. So, looking at some of these little guys on our Hanson Nature Trail, this is what I remember when I was a kid. And this is what I hope that my kids will continue to do, and not just them, but their children as well. So, we work really hard to partner with not just the Parks Department, but we partner with other user groups as well, to make sure that our parks are representing our community and that we can play a pivotal role in that as well. And just one example is, maybe, these little guys. These are the Grand Rapids Dirt Dogs, and I just love these kids. They're out at Luton Park, learning how to ride mountain bikes and doing trail maintenance every week, and learning to respect the natural world and how to take care of it. And I don't know, I can't get my slides to work, but behind that is a photo of them using their little kid-sized tools to build a new trail. So, different user groups, like our mountain biking community, our running community, and many, many others, are out there doing work and helping and volunteering and contributing to our parks. And so, I'm very excited to have, to be able to be the boots on the ground and the face of the Parks Foundation, to be able to meet these users and engage them and say, "How can we help you to do what you need to do?" And in turn, "How can you help us to make sure our parks are meeting your needs as well?" So, with that, we have a lot of work to do. We're really excited to be here. Some of the projects that we've helped with in the past include expanding 20 acres at Philelsburg Park in Lowell. We've helped purchase acreage already at Millennium Park, helped with infrastructure. And I just got to tour the meadows yesterday, and I'm really excited about the pavilion and the space out there and that we're being a part of that as well, and that expansion. And we also helped with the successful purchase of 170 acres of the future Two Rivers Park in Caledonia Township. So, that was really exciting for us to be a part of that acquisition, knowing that in the future, that's going to be an amazing recreational space for aquatic recreation in an area that's quickly growing, where there's not a lot of public access to our rivers. That's a huge part of what we do. And looking ahead to the future, again, we're working with Millennium Park and the meadows right now, but even further out, working on, we actually, actually are a huge part of the campaign for Chief Hazy Cloud and the acquisition that's coming up in Ada. Knowing that this is a long-term commitment, knowing that this is a long-term project, hoping to get some DNR trust fund grants, but our role is to engage the community in Ada and the surrounding areas to help them understand that this is the next Millennium Park. Upon completion, this will be almost 1,000 acres. It'll be our second-largest park and a huge resource for the east side of the county. So, I'm very excited to be a part of it. I think I have the best job in the world, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work together in partnership with the Parks Department, with the county, and our user groups, to make sure that we get to have a say and we get to hear them about what our parks and our open spaces will be like in the future, so that we can shape the future of Kent County and look forward to how people want to engage with the outdoors as well. So, I have a short video. We'll see if it'll play, and it'll help us to see a little bit more about our resources. The Kent County Parks Foundation is a nonprofit organization, and we ensure that our county park system continues to improve over time. So, we do that by providing financial support for capital projects like buildings and trails, and we also do land acquisition. So, we may help purchase acreage to expand an existing park, or even buy property to build a new park in the future.
Kent County Parks fits somebody or everybody somehow. We know from our survey work that most households in the county, somebody from that household uses the county parks, whether it's a little toddler at the splash pad, or the family outing, or somebody reading a book at a picnic table, walking the trail. You know, you don't see unhappy people at parks.
We're very fortunate in West Michigan to have 38 county parks and four intercommunity trails. And what those do is they really connect our communities together, and they allow people to experience nature in the outdoors in so many different ways. We have cross-country skiing and snowshoeing in the winter, lots of runs and races and splash pad, fun times in the summer. And in the fall, we have plenty of folks wanting to explore the colors. And the great thing about our parks is really they're accessible, and everybody can find a way to connect with nature.
I think parks are important. I grew up until I was seven in the city and always used parks there. The parks are a site where people gather. They're a place where people come together and do fun things and make plans, you know, for future events. So, it's, yeah, it's just a really special place to gather and be outdoors.
I think parks are important for kids to play in because it's where, it's where they learn things, not playing video games or just staying inside the whole time. Even though a book, you can learn things from that, it's still a lot of fun to be outside and actually do stuff.
It's good for walking the dogs in the summertime, for getting away from the city life, because this is definitely different from that. And then, you know, in the fall, watching all the colors change on the leaves and all that, it's very beautiful. In the wintertime, it's even better. All the fun, snowboarding, sledding, we love it. We love it.
Elijah, what's your favorite thing to do when we come to the park? Is it walking around the woods, or is it sledding, snowboarding?
Sledding.
You like sledding? Is that your favorite?
He's been asking me for weeks to come. So, yeah, he loves the sledding. He loves sledding. That's his thing. He doesn't care how cold it is. He's going to be out there sledding.
Unlike other park systems, Kent County Parks don't have a dedicated village, and each year, our parks must compete for funding against other county government needs. That means we can keep our parks open, clean, and safe, but funding to grow our parks, build new trails, and enhance our facilities is extremely limited. Over 90 years ago, the citizens of Kent County approached our county board and requested that a park system be created. They knew that parks would greatly benefit those living in 1924, as well as people whom they would never meet generations into the future. Those citizens left us a legacy, a legacy that is now ours to continue forward. Today, we see people from all walks of life enjoying our parks in a variety of ways. As our population continues to grow rapidly, it is up to us to protect these irreplaceable green spaces. This is our legacy for today and for those generations yet to come.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kate, for your leadership on the foundation. I just wanted to note that we do have representation on the foundation's board. Of course, Roger Sabine, our Parks Director, Department Director, I'm sorry, is on the board. And then, Mary Swanson has been on the board for 12 years. And come July 1st, Commissioner Jones will be taking that position. So, we will have both staff and commission representation on the board, which I think is, will be very good for the foundation and a good way for us to keep connected as well. We do have time for a few questions, if anybody has any. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. I really enjoyed your presentation.
Thanks.
But even more than that, your editorializing was spot-on because you were kind of bordering on being politically incorrect when talking about these stupid things. And I loved, I loved every minute of it.
Thank you.
Because you're absolutely correct. Seven hours is insane. It's more than they're sleeping. And, you know, I know my wife and I have talked about taking our kids outside, getting them out with a baseball bat, not to play baseball, but maybe throw one of these in here, see if we hit. It is, it's so critical. You can see the changes. You were just showing these kids on the hill. There's one kid on the hill, back when I was a kid, Mary Waters Park, there'd be literally hundreds of kids sliding down the hills. Sandlot baseball was played everywhere. You couldn't go anywhere. It's when school was out and not seeing sand, you don't see that stuff anymore. I don't know how you get back to that, but it sure is a lot more fun than anything they can come up with. And I've always said, wherever the pavement ends, that's where the real adventure begins. So, thanks for everything you're doing. You have a passion for this, and that's the type of employees we'd like to have, people with passion for what they do. And I thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. I say it's one of the easiest jobs in the world, because once I get people out there, it's just getting them out there. That's the hard part.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Kate. Your passion and energy is contagious. I am a big fan of Kent County Parks, have been even before I showed up here in this seat. It started at the local level when there was some collaborative projects between Cannon Township and Kent County Parks that I enjoy on a regular basis. In Cannon, we have the trail that runs through Townsend Park, and we've partnered on Luton Park projects to improve that. I'm excited to be the, a representation on the board and look forward to, to working to continue to grow the foundation. So, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I see none. Again, thank you for the great presentation and, or presentation. Keep us informed with how things are going. I think it seems to be really going in a good way right now for your organization.
Lots of work to do and lots of energy. Thanks for all of the support and thanks for allowing me to be here today.
Good, thank you. Okay, so we will move then to Item 6 on our agenda, which is public comment. Is there any public comments today? If there is, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak forward.
Hi, good morning, and thank you for having me. My name is Ellie Webster, and I'm at 3330 Centennial in Cascade there. I was asked to be here today to address everybody and introduce myself as a citizen here of Grand Rapids. I, I work here, live here, play here. It's a wonderful city. I am a business professional here, and I'm also a member of the Board on the Grand Rapids Pride Center. One of the things that makes Grand Rapids wonderful is the fact that the city looks out for all of its people. There's a lot of discussion right now on LGBT issues, and especially trans issues. A lot of misinformation, and just a lot of hype in the media. And I wanted to introduce myself as a Grand Rapids resident and also as a trans woman, and let you know that as trans people, we are here. We live here, we work here, we play here. We're an active part of the community. And with all of the things that are going on right now, I'm grateful that Grand Rapids has the city protections in place, so that I know that I'm safe, just because I am who I am. And I think that was kind of basically what I did, is just introduce myself and let you know I'm here. And if anybody has any questions for me, if, as a board, you ever want to speak to anybody, I'm open to that as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other people wishing to provide public comment today? Please come forward and also please state your name and address. You have five minutes.
My name is Keynes Sheen Morton. I live at 7370 Calamino Place, Caledonia, Michigan. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm incredibly nervous. I've never done anything like this before. But I'd like to tell you a bit about myself. I, I work for one of the largest healthcare systems here in West Michigan. It's probably pretty easy to guess who that is. I'm the mother of a 12-year-old daughter. She's 12 years old, but seems like she's going on 17. She already gives me the teenage girl look. I'm a video gamer. I like performance art at the various venues here around town. I also really enjoy blackpoint photography. Like Ellie, I'm also a transgender woman. I was born with a male body that did not match my female brain and my female soul. I hid this part myself from everyone, and even tried to hide it from myself as much as I could. I would hide it in the closet, so to speak. The incongruency between my body and my brain, my soul, grew into a condition known as gender dysphoria. Gender dysphoria is defined as clinically significant levels of depression, distress, anxiety related to a gender incongruency. Though I tried living as a woman for, or, I'm sorry, though I tried living as a man for a long while, eventually I realized I could no longer live that lie and that I would have to transition my body from male to female. And so, I did. It sounds easy, but it took a lot of soul-searching to even reach that point, and then a lot of emotional turmoil to come out to my friends, my family, my coworkers. But I couldn't live any other way. Now, four years later and several medical interventions later, I'm living as my authentic self as a woman, and my life is more fulfilling and happier than I ever could have imagined. I've become myself. I would die before going back to living the lie I was living before. Thank you for listening to my story.
Thank you. I realize it's not always easy to address, but thank you for your comments. Any other public comments today? Okay, I see none, then we shall move to our next item, which is the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Callen for a moment.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. Our consent agenda includes minutes from our last meeting and three resolutions that we consider routine, two regarding easements related to park property and a Michigan DNR trust fund grant. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Support. Support by Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Grady. And are there questions or comments on the consent agenda? I see none, so this is a roll call vote. I will call on Madam Plut.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Olter.
Yes.
Stack.
Yes.
Hunstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Reeve.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Flotowski.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Hornike.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. We move then to agenda item number eight, which is a sole resolution, and I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 9691650, which involves the, the new contract with the Kent County Deputy Sheriff's Association. I move that resolution.
Support.
Support by Vice Chair Schroll. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Vonck?
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. Just quick, I want to thank both sides. I mean, it was a negotiated agreement, and sometimes those can be difficult, so I appreciate the time and effort on both sides to bring this agreement to the full board.
Any other questions or comments? I see none, this is a roll call vote, I will call on Madam Plur.
Commissioner Vonck?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bolter?
Yes.
Steck?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Breeby?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Vandermolen?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Tallin?
Yes.
Bukowski?
Yes.
Chivas?
Yes.
Corn dyke?
Yes.
Schroll?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, motion passes. We move then to agenda item number nine, which is public comment. We have a one-minute public comment, if there's any additional comments by the public. I see none, so we will move to agenda item number 10, which is reports. Are there any reports from the commissioners today? Commissioner Mast?
Well, let me give, let me give reports about two different things. First of all, a lot of you have heard, and we've kept you informed of the, um, changes at the LRE, and the new bylaws which specify we can have additional board members, and Kent County has come up with its, at least two of the three. So we're making a recommendation to the LRE Board to accept our two nominees, which are one, somebody from a provider agency, somebody from a, a health funding agency. So that's happening, and hopefully we'll get a third one, so we'll have better representation on that board. Stan Steck is doing a nice job of keeping us going there, so we'll have, we'll have four members at this point. I think, I think this, today, hopefully you'll accept those, where they'll be considered.
It's actually going to be next week before they actually get formally approved.
Okay.
Or considered.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a process. Secondly, I want to mention that tomorrow, June 10th, is a stand-down for vet, veterans at the Metro Hospital Farmers Market. That's an annual thing that the Healthcare for Homeless Vets does, do a lot of distribution of needed items for homeless and needy veterans. So that's, it's always a nice occasion. It's at the farmers, where the Farmers Market is, at Metro Hospital every, I think every Thursday during the summer, this is on Friday.
Good, thank you. Any other reports? Commissioner Morgan?
Rather quickly, the airport authority is going to transition July 1st, we're going to have a little ceremony out there. I can't remember the time, do you remember the time, Dick, like 10 o'clock?
10 o'clock, yeah.
Something like that. And there'll be a formal, formal celebration down at the downtown market on July 13th, I believe, so just to let the board members know.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. The Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority did not meet this month, which doesn't happen all that often, but I did want to let you know that there will be a presentation and celebration tonight at 5:30 at the Pyramid Scheme, in which Chris Larson, the Executive Director of Downtown Grand Rapids Inc., will deliver his State of the Downtown presentation. So you're all welcome to attend that if you would like.
And you'll be there.
I imagine that.
Any other reports? I see none, so we will move to miscellaneous. Commissioner Miscellaneous, Commissioner Chivas?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I would like to thank Ellie and Cadence for coming out this morning. I did reach out to the Grand Rapids Pride Center and ask them to ask their transgender group to send some representatives. I think sometimes we get caught up in what the media presents to us as a certain image, and I really think it's important to get away from that and understand that we do serve real people who live in Kent County. So, again, thank you for coming out. My second comment is on a kudos to the Health Department on this continual issue with the vapor at Hall and Madison. They've done a really, really good job at helping the family that's displaced, and I just wanted to, again, get it publicly in the record that I'm very, very proud of the Health Department. And that's going to segue me into my third point, which is to invite everybody to rock the block this Saturday, right at the heart of my district, and literally about 30 feet from where the vapor issue is. But it's, it's a really, really fun time, definitely worth coming out for, so.
It's not hazardous to your health.
No. But you do get to see how the EPA has fenced everything off, and that they are working to clean that up, so.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. Again, Commissioner Vonck and I share a really close border, and the start of summer, Rockford Event is this weekend, Saturday is the parade. I am not in the parade, but I will be there supporting my son, who is in the parade, with Rockford Band. It's just if you're looking for something to do after you attend Commissioner Chivas' event near the vapor, you can come out to Rockford and, and have one more event to, to enjoy in the community, so I just wanted to mention that.
Excellent. By the way, the vapor may be a good name for a bar or pub. All right, Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Wanted to add one item to the list of, we all know for certain we're going to have death taxes, and I would like to add the fact that we're not collecting everything we can from our surcharges. We know that, and I think it's critical, and I'm sorry, I know I'm going back to talk about an earlier subject, but we ran out of time, so I just want to circle back, take our bite out of this. It, it's really critical before we move forward, I think, to get a handle on that, because without knowing what the baseline is, how much we should have in that revenue stream, it's hard to project what we need, and we at least need a mechanism in place to, if some legislation is passed after we collect this new surcharge, that we can go back, give this money back to the taxpayers in a fashion that's reasonable, because there will be money coming back, but we have to put some teeth into some new laws so these guys aren't rewarded for, for not telling the truth on their statements. I mean, it's historic, the way they've always gotten away with it. They're going to continue without stiffer penalties, because the penalties, again, do not reflect the revenues they're gaining by, by doing this stuff illegally. Two, I'd also like to invite, this is my last crack at this, we'd like to invite all the World War II and Korean War veterans to our Freedom Cruise, which starts next week, Tuesday. We have events Tuesday through Saturday, and Saturday's the day we want everybody to come down to the Veterans Home. We're going to have live music, we'll have food, we're going to have a VIP tent that's going to be filled just with World War II and Korean War guys. We're inviting everyone. They're dying at a rate of one every three minutes in this country, so we're running out of time to do something like this. And we want to go down and just have the kids, your family, whoever, come down and shake their hands and thank them. I know they're going to get a big kick out of it. I know there's a lot of stuff going on that weekend, but I think this is a really important thing to do. It's like the old saying, if not us, who? If not now, when? However that works. It's, it's really important, and we will be giving a proclamation, I think Chair Saulfeld is going to be issuing a flag to our Korean War veteran, that represents everyone else, and I believe Robert Healan will be presenting a flag to the World War II veteran. So I would appreciate if you could make it down to one of our events, especially the event on Saturday, the 18th. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Vonck?
Thank you, Chair. Sunday, I was on my way to church, and I want to thank the Sheriff Department for what a wonderful job they do. I was on the way to church down West River, and a police cruiser pulled me over, and I asked my wife, I said, "Did I do anything wrong?" And she said, "No," which doesn't happen very often at the Vonck Household, but anyway, she gave me the option of being right once, maybe. And then, then she says, "A second cruiser's coming up alongside us in part of the pullover." And so I got a little nervous about that, and rolled down the window, and I was wondering if they had their guns pulled, not sure what was going on, and a description of a car like I was driving had graffitied a car in Plainfield Township, and they pulled me over, and the police officer looked in the window with a smile on his face, seems like we got the wrong car, so. I'm on the way, so. Twenty, 50 years ago, I pulled over a few times with carpal trouble in my right foot, but haven't had that problem in a few years. Thank you, Chair.
But you know, we won't have to go through any kind of replacing jersey.
Not right now, anyway.
All right. Commissioner Morgan?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the, the committee that put this report together for the dispatch. I'm fairly passionate about this issue, probably not as passionate as Commissioner Voorhees in the zoo, but pretty passionate. And it's really important that we get a platform, and we get equipment for this. And, and I don't think we should hold it up, because I think there's going to be a lot of politics involved in trying to get the surcharge straightened out, and I'll have to tell you, the interoperability component of this with what we're trying to build is very important. And for years, we just have not been able to communicate on, on serious acting scenes or serious scenes with the police or fire or any other responders, so. I, I think we all thought that VHF was going to be the answer, then we all thought that the UHF was going to be the answer, and then the FCC came in and shrunk the, the UHF ban and the VHF ban, so this system, I think, is going to be the system. And I, I just wanted to throw my two cents in that. I just really wanted to thank the committee for their work.
And I was going to mention earlier, your email of earlier, I think in January, talking about setting up that platform, and I think we are certainly achieving what you pointed out in that email, so I agree with those comments. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. Just a few things, I won't steal Commissioner Hennessy or Voorhees's comments, but I look forward to the zoo fundraiser on Friday, so I'll let you guys do the details and me. Second of all, I, I read this past week where a young man, Commissioner Chivas's son, Emile, completed WeBlows, 14 pins, I believe, and is moving on to the Boy Scout, so just wanted to congratulate him on that accomplishment. And then finally, we could talk all day about fundraisers and everything that's going on, what, what makes this county special, and, and there are a lot of good things. I mean, when I look at what I base quality of life on, I mean, I've got the ability to get in a vehicle, go to the beach, go to parks, get on a bike. There is a group out there that's, that's kind of under the radar, and they've got a fundraiser on Saturday, one of several this summer. The People That Spoke folks have Cranked 2016. It's an organization that rehabilitates bicycles and tries to redistribute them in, in the community. And for someone that's got the luxury to get to and from work very easily, a bicycle to someone could do that same thing and really change their quality of life, having means of transportation, getting to and from. If you can't make the fundraiser, which is on Saturday, their, one big thing they're trying, is they're trying to get 1,000 bikes donated this year to be rehabilitated and given back out. Last year, they, I think, did 400 of them. I know that the bike that was sitting in my garage, that I always thought, gosh, I'm going to fix that thing back up, and I rode that forever. It's doing someone in the community far better use than hanging in my garage, so if you've got a spare bike or know someone that does, they're located on 221 Logan, and if you just bring the bike, one of their volunteers will come out and get it for you. So I just want to put a plug in for that. It's, it's, it's a worthwhile organization, and we have a lot of those that operate in the community out of sight and away from the media that are doing good things. So I just wanted to highlight that one today.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. I know that we're often frustrated with what goes on at the state level, but sometimes it goes right, and when it does, I think we should acknowledge folks, and I do want to acknowledge Representative Healan and her legislators for the work that they've done and the leadership they've exercised on this Medicaid issue, running it through the budget process, because I think we're going to end up with a, a budget that's going to be very favorable for us and, and provide some great opportunities for this company.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Voorhees?
Yes, I would like to speak about the zoo. This Friday is our annual Rendezvous Zoo. This year, the theme is Let Them Eat Cake, and I voted for it. I should have voted for cookies, but anyway, because it's our 125th anniversary, and so it's a celebration. It'll be a great evening, and it starts at 7:00. You can still get tickets for it, either call at the zoo, get the zoo, or tickets are available. And it's just a great evening of, of food, fun, animals being exhibited with their trainers and handlers, and it's just a great evening at the zoo, it's, great things are happening there, and so you're all welcome, and come and enjoy Rendezvous Zoo to 2016. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? I see none, so I will call on Commissioner Talon to adjourn.
Thank you, Chair. Move to adjourn subject to your call, to, or to Thursday, June 23, for an official meeting at 8:30.
All in favor indicate to say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.